Good evening, everyone. It's great to have everybody here tonight. It's September 22nd, 2025, and it's 6:00 PM. And I'd like to call this regular board meeting to order. As I said before, it's great to have you here on the first day of fall. I said that to somebody today and I, they said, "Oh, today's the first day of fall." And I said, "Well, I only know that because Monica Hall told us that this morning." And they didn't know who Monica Hall was, but you know, I gave her all the credit. So we'll have our pledges of allegiance by Sherri Hoffpower and then our invocation by Mr. Mike Wilburn.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
May change for the invitation. Heavenly Father, we are deeply grateful that we live in a land where we can be freely. Thank you, Father, for the men and women who have devoted their lives to provide that for us, for this freedom. Thank you, Father, for those that are teaching our children. And thank you for all those that are involved in the school. And pray, Father, you're blessed and good on them. Father, pray that you help us to be a place where students can come and learn freely and feel free and unhindered. God, Father, should guide and direct us as we make decisions this evening for the best interest of this school system. Forsting, deep that.
Amen, President. I think we missed some, our kids. We have kids here who are supposed to be doing our pledges.
Oh, no one told me that. Wait, they're welcome to come up if they want to do pledges again. We're happy to do lots of pledges, anytime. We'll even stand up again. I'm sorry. I did not, I did not realize they were doing the pledges. And this is a group from Allstate. Yeah. All right.
D, J, R, D, A, S, P, R, S, T, W, E, L, N, S, R, G, B, C, T, A, K, N, A.
Thank you so much, Allstate. We appreciate it. Good job, guys. Sorry we missed you the first time through. We can say them all day long. All right, our mission statement will be read tonight by Mr. John Gallin.
The mission of Copper's Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction, which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship, which is what we just saw with these young kids that were up here.
All right, and next we have citizens' comments. We have one person who has signed up. His name is Cameron Cole, 1441 Neff Drive in Copper's Cove, and he would like to talk about school funding. Mr. Cole, come on up.
Hello, as she said, my name is Cameron Cole. And me and my wife and my family, we just moved into the district about three months ago. We were living on base and we bought a house here in Cove. I have three students, or three children, that go to Copper's Cove ISD, one at SC Lee Junior High School, and then the other two at Williams Ledger, but they're going to separate schools right now. Early on in the year, my 12-year-old daughter started her time of the month. I don't know, I don't want to say it, but you guys can imagine. And so me and my wife told her, "Start bringing clothes to school, leave them in your locker just in case you need extra pairs." And she told me, "We can't use the lockers." So then I was like, "Why can't you use the lockers?" And she said that students have been destroying them, so they can't be used. So I called the school to see if she was lying to me or not, because kids lie, we get that. And the school told me the same thing. Yes, the students are not allowed to use the lockers. Couple weeks later, all three of my children brought home this form for funding for the school, talking about some kind of grant. And I know those lockers were purchased with top tax dollar money. So why would I want to sign this to give more money to the school district if it's going to be used on stuff that's not going to be used from the students? So that was my own concern, and that's why I haven't signed it yet, because I've been waiting to come to this. I don't want to come to you guys and just complain about something, so I came up with some solutions. We can either, one, make the parents pay for damaging it, or give the kid a warning. They get maybe three strikes, first time's a warning, second time detention or in-school suspension, and then third time, maybe the parents have to pay for it. I don't know how much a brand-new locker costs, but I don't believe that it's thousands of dollars. I think it's something that a parent covered. I think, I think that's it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. We're not, the board's not allowed to address you, but I believe Dr. Hawkins can.
Yeah, Mr. Cole, first of all, I don't think school, and I don't know how long the lockers have been out of commission here, and obviously this isn't the place to ask the board, because they have more knowledge. I'm an immigrant to Cove as well, as you are. I moved in in January, and so I don't know the historical context of everything in totality yet, but I can tell you, being 17 years as superintendent, starting my 18th, and two years as deputy director, that it is a, very much a growing trend for there to be no lockers in schools. But that's not a school funding issue. I think probably the most appropriate path forward is to set up, we will reach out to you tomorrow and set up a time in which we can talk. The, the paper that you have there, let me just explain so that if there's anybody else that has any concerns or anything about that, that is a change for our community. And this year will be the first year that we're under the CEP School Lunch Program. That's the Community Eligibility Program, in which kids can get breakfast and lunch at no cost to the child. Wonderful program. In my former district, we've been doing it since about 2017, 2018, and the main thing is kids get fed. And, and so there's a lot of good things in that, but along with that, also you have to make some changes, because it does shift responsibilities from the child nutrition department into administrative departments, the PMS departments, the curriculum departments. These folks over here have been working, as every campus principal and many teachers, to make sure that we get those forms back in. The purpose of that is multiple-fold. Number one, it puts us in accountability mechanism, in the state accountability system, where we are more like our peers. The second thing, it is, it does have funding implications, not necessarily that the parent is responsible for more funding, but in the state funding template, if your free and reduced lunch program numbers go down, then your comp ed funding and title funding and all those things are affected through that. So it's kind of an indirect effect on that. But like I said, we'll reach out to you tomorrow and we can visit some more about that. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Just remembering this. My child, that's supposed to, that would be Ms. Martin Walker, she grew up on the form, and I read it, and I told her, I said, "Hey, I went to all school and asked him some questions before I signed it." And then she started first, and I'm tears crying, because the teacher said that whichever class turns in fastest is piece of art. But I'm totally okay with that, I'm all in for that. But I was upset that my daughter was crying over something she physically can't, she can't sign, you know? So that part, I was a little upset about with her.
Sure, it's an incentive, and, and so it's like any other incentive, yes, that, you know, child's attendance sometimes is out of their control as well. And so, you know, if a kid's sick, then they got to be at home. And so it's important to them, when kids get competing, to compete. Extrinsic motivation goes a long way with those kids. And so, but anyway, we will reach out to you. Thank you for coming and welcome to Cove.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we will go to our good things. Mr. Curtis Quillen. And if y'all would, well, Curtis with the K, come on.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have a list of recognitions tonight, and we want to start with staff recognitions, where for the second year in a row, and the third time to my knowledge in the district's history, the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals awarded the Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year from Copper's Cove ISD. In Region 12 for this year, it is Kelly Thompson.
So she is, she's not, she's not.
So that's two years in a row, and in both years, the person who got it was promoted before the award. Okay, student recognitions, we want to start first with Lemonade Day. This time, it is because the most profitable stand in the entire greater Fort Hood area was right here in Copper's Cove ISD. It was one of our own. Trenton Buckram was recently awarded. Right here, three, two, one, three, two. Congratulations. And now. And now we're going to move on to Peanut Butter Bowl, which CCISD participated in once again this year. Tonight, we're going to recognize some of the community partners, campuses, and different groups that were invaluable in collecting all of the peanut butter that stays right here in Copper's Cove. Together, 12,240 pounds were collected by the district. Do we know a place yet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. That, that timing, the confidence.
Why don't you come up too, because this wouldn't happen without you.
And so tonight, we're going to recognize some of the businesses and groups from around town, including some of the campuses here that were, like we said, invaluable in doing that. We want to start with, and we're going to mention some that weren't able to make it tonight. Keith Ace Hardware is the first one, they weren't able to be here tonight. HEB of Copper's Cove is here, and we'd like to recognize.
And here are our top five sellers, top five sellers. We'll give it to Madonna, she sold over 5,000.
Miss Hoffman, this play real quick. Right there. You're fine, you're fine. Everyone right here, three, two, one, three, two, one. Thank you.
Two more that weren't able to be here with us tonight, but we'd like to recognize Bush's Chicken of Copper's Cove and Young's Oriental Kitchen as well. The next group that was able to be here with us tonight is Stony Brook of Copper's Cove. We'll keep it in the same row for the next group, Brand Financial Services, which is affiliated with Allstate.
Perfect, thank you very much.
The next group we'd like to recognize is JR Rentals in Century 21.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next group wasn't able to be here tonight, but that is the Non-Preal Barber Shop that was invaluable in this. Our, our next group takes us on post, where we'd like to recognize the Fort Hood Commissary.
Three, two, one, three, two. Thank you.
Another local business that started helping us the weekend of Stuff the Bus, where they let us, you know, throw these red, red bins out while we were collecting school supplies, Walmart Supercenter of Copper's Cove. The next person we'd like to recognize in the last three years has used her living room as a staging area for all of the peanut butter for Coach Buckram, it's Ms. Hoffpower. The next business we'd like to recognize is Little Blessings, Mr. Trager. The next group is from Grace United Methodist Church. The final three groups we'd like to recognize on the collection end are all campuses in CCISD, which made a difference. And then the final group we'd like to recognize on the collection end of it is Clements Parsons Elementary School. And then, we are not done. All six-plus tons of the peanut butter that was collected was donated to two groups that are here tonight, both Baptist Benevolence Ministries and My Brother's House of Copper's Cove.
Hey, and doing our civic duty, everybody in here needs to vote, because you'll see this lady right here. How are you?
That's all of our good things for tonight, but we do already have a lengthy list for next month.
And y'all remember, we had a workshop a couple of weeks ago, and so that was an extremely long meeting that we had that night, if anybody was here for it. I can't remember what time we got home, but it was late. So we discussed and questioned and discussed some more, and so that's why our public meeting, this meeting can go a little bit quicker, in fact, quite a bit quicker, because we've asked questions already and talked about things. But we do have an information item, and that is the NAFIS 2025 Fall Conference Update. And this year, three of us went to Washington DC. Mike Wilburn, Dr. Hawkins, and I went, and it was just last week, wasn't it? And I knew we were there just, just the other day. So we'll give you just a quick update, and we'll go ahead and start with Mike, if he would like to say anything about the Fall Conference.
One of, one of the things that we always have opportunity to do is to meet with the people who really make the decisions, that's the congressional aides, who make the recommendation to the senators and to the congressmen regarding issues that are, are current. And certainly, one of the things that we are concerned about is impact aid funding. And if I would ask, or if I would give a test to everyone who's in here regarding what you know about impact aid, there'd be some of you who pass it and some of you would not. But one of the things that's important about it is that we understand what the impact aid is, and that's one of the purposes of this conference. And they give us an overview sheet regarding that, and we've, we've also been able to ask questions regarding the different people within the, the NAFIS organization, which is helpful. But I would encourage each of us as, as board members to, to know a little bit more about impact aid, because one of the things that, there's always possibility we might go back into the heavy impact aid funding, which would give us a lot more money than what we get now. But one of the things that we've advocated for over the course of the years is that every student is important, and we've, we've asked and will continue to ask that each student receive the same amount of funding, for, for each student. Currently, there are different students that are weighted, depending upon if you're on impact on Indian lands or, or different other places that, that receive the impact aid. But that's one of the things we advocate for, that no student is more important than any other student. And if you have 100 students, or if you have one student, or if you have 1,000 students, each of them are important. And we ask that, that each year, that that be considered by the congressman and by the senators. And we have opportunity to meet with those representatives from time to time, but most of the time, we meet with the, the aides that, that are there, and we always express how Copper's Cove benefits from that. So that's one of the things, but another thing, the different courses, different classes that are given, one of them is that impact aid, what to know before you apply. I would encourage each of us who are, who have never been to that, to go there, because it tells us a lot more about what impact aid is. And that's an important thing that we understand that, since we are federally impacted.
I would just add, you know, they say all politics is local, and I don't know that that's always true, because, you know, in our unique situation, we have local politics, state politics, and federal politics, to where, you know, most districts don't, don't have all three spickets, so to speak. But I, I think the thing to keep in mind, from my perspective, is 80% of military children are educated through public education. is 80% of military children are educated through public education. And all public education's not the same. Public education in New York is not the same as public education in Texas. But yet, we all get painted with the same stroke, okay? And so, you know, politics is quite violent in that realm, but I just know that, you know, these families that are sacrificing, that have committed to serve our nation, that these kiddos are all over the world, they have a very unique set of challenges, which makes them more expensive to educate. That's a fact. But with 80% of them being educated in public education, I would like to really know that Texas number, so I'm gonna work hard to find out what the Texas number is, because I think it'll be even higher. But this impact aid program has not been fully funded since the late 60s. And so, you know, this ought to be a program that everybody could agree. Doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, doesn't matter if you're Republican, Independent, Libertarian, you know, if we can't take care of our soldiers, I'm not sure what kind of country we'll wake up in every day. And so, you know, when we think about it, it hasn't been fully funded since the late 60s, you know, we're asking for about a half a billion dollars, and you say, well, that's a lot of money, till you understand that there's federal vouchers that was funded at $5 billion. And so, you know, I think we have a responsibility to advocate to all of our elected officials that, you know, at minimum, fully fund the program, so that we can do the things that we need to do for the kids all over the United States.
I think that's one of the biggest things that we advocated for this time, was to fully fund the program. We also, those of you that have gone before, we have a new executive director, and she's from Hawaii, that's where she was from. She lives in, apparently, Tennessee right now, but she works, she has an apartment in DC, like a lot of our legislators and other people that work in DC. So, we got to meet her for the first time, and there have been some changes in the organization, and it looks like they're positive changes, so that was good to see. Like Mike said, I don't know if anybody here really could understand the formula that our federally impacted kids go under. They don't just go kid, child by child. It's like, there's some, you know, they have higher percentages here and lower here, and you have to meet all these criteria in order to get what's called heavy impact aid. Well, we received heavy impact aid for years and years, and in fact, we were able, as a board and superintendent, to put money aside from that impact aid money. We were getting, at times, about $16 million a year, which was 20% of our overall budget back then. And so, we received a lot of impact aid money. And then, our numbers started going down, not just here, but in Colleen as well. They have also, they are also falling out of heavy impact aid, and it's just hard for me to believe when a district that large can fall out of impact aid. So, what we would have advocated to our senators and representatives is that, like Mike said, each child should be represented, whether you have 20% or 35%, which is the threshold. Why do you have to have a certain percentage to get much money? Because we get very little now from impact aid. We do get, I think, about $300,000 a year, which is great. That's nothing to sneeze at, but compared to a couple of years ago, when it was $16 million, it made a big difference in our budget. And we are a property poor district, so that helped us a whole lot, and let us do some things that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. In fact, from that money that we set aside, we built House Creek Elementary School, you know, without floating a bond or anything. We built it from the impact aid money that we had saved over the years, and we've done some really great things in our district. So, the conferences are important. We've got to keep advocating, maybe our own ideas, because not everybody likes the idea that I just gave, that every child should be treated the same way. But I think it's so important, and the conference itself is good. We have a Texas conference that Dr. Hawkins will go to later in the year, that advocates as a group for the military, and it's always really important as well. So, thank you for letting us go, everybody. We appreciated it, and we tried to send a few pictures, so that you'd know we were there and we were doing our job, and we did enjoy it. Our consent agenda is made up of, first, the previous Board of Trustees meeting minutes, first, our budget workshop meeting on August 7, 2025, our workshop meeting, August 11, 2025, our regular meeting, August 12, 2025, a special call meeting, August 19, 2025, a special meeting, including public hearing minutes, August 28, 2025, and a special meeting, again, August 31, 2025. So, you see, we met just a little bit in August. So, I remember somebody asked me, when they were running for board, they said, "Well, y'all don't meet in the summertime, because the kids are off, right?" And I said, "Huh?" And she said, "Oh, you do. Never mind. I don't want to be on that board." So, we do definitely meet in the summer. It's when we make a lot of decisions, important decisions, budget, taxes, things like that. So, that's part of the consent agenda. Then, we did this last time, we'll do the payment of bills, and the discussion to approve purchases over $15,000 was done, as I said, at our workshop. First, the purchase of 113 Dell Pro 14+ laptops. It's DIR CPO 5792 for $134,077.89. That's from budgeted funds. Purchase of 1,300 Dell Chromebooks for students, DIR CPO 5792, and that's $448,864, and again, from budgeted funds. Purchase two Dell servers, one Power Store, support migration and install, and this is DIR CPO 5792, $194,838.38, again, from budgeted funds. Then, purchase light-speed software, classroom technology. This is Borderland Security Quote Number 2025-DS-36SL, $69,000, again, budgeted funds. Then, we have the purchase of Cisco Meraki switches and wireless access points. It's CDWG, Texas Direct, Cisco DIR-CPO-5347, again, budgeted funds for $97,696.68. Then, to renew the NWEA MAP Growth K-12 and MAP Growth Science, this is R1924-7474 instructional for $97,242, and this is IMA funds. A purchase of a 2026 Chevrolet truck for Coppers Cove High School CTE programs, the preferred vendor, 2024-2025 NBB670-22, May of 2025, for $61,391.75, again, from budgeted funds. Then, we have purchase of passenger buses, and this is from Longhorn Bus Sales. It's Buy Board Contract Number 630-20 for $308,788, again, from budgeted funds. Then, we have purchase of six fleet vehicles. This is from Don Hewlett Chevrolet. It's government pricing, and it's $126,196.50 from budgeted funds. The purchase of three maintenance trucks and one cargo van, again, Don Hewlett Chevrolet, government pricing, for $151,185.54 from budgeted funds. Then, we have renewal of Red Rover Technologies LLC, subscription for time and absence management and hiring licenses, for $69,010 from budgeted funds. And then, we'll consider and take action under consent agenda to approve the election service contracts with Corial and Bell Counties, and consider and take action to adopt non-business days to meet HB 3033 requirements for the 2025-2026 school year, and consider and take action to approve the CCISD list of additional approved T-test appraisers for the 2025-2026 school year, and then, one out-of-state trip to the Oasis Conference, November 13 and 14 in 2025. So, that is our long consent agenda. As I said, we discussed and had questions answered at our workshop meeting earlier in the month, but if anybody has any questions that they would like to have answered, feel free to ask it at this time. Anyone?
Regarding the buses, are those buses replacing those that don't have AC? How many buses will we have remaining that don't have AC?
Three route buses. Three route buses.
So, with this purchase, we'll still have three that don't have air conditioning?
Yes.
And regarding the Chevy Sedans, do we know how many private reversible miles that we have annually?
I don't know. I predict.
I bet it's a few, huh?
Now, regarding those three that are without AC, is it just because it's too old of a vehicle to where we could put a new one in, a new AC unit? Why is there no AC remaining, even after this purchase?
The replacement cycle of what we've been doing for the past several years, we get two buses each year. And as we get those buses, we start replacing, and we move buses around, and as we said before, that, you know, our shortest routes is what we try to keep the buses with no air conditioners in them. But it's just in the replacement cycle, and we've added routes, so we're having to use some of the buses that we've moved down for those routes.
I hope Mr. Traeger's asking, those buses originally didn't have ACs?
No.
No?
It's not that they're not working.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilburn, a second by Mr. Gallin. We'll start down there with Sherri, if you'll please voice your vote.
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
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 Alright, the motion carries unanimously. And our action item is to consider and take action on a resolution to nominate one or two people for the Board of Directors for Corial Central Appraisal District. Dr. Hawkins?
Yes, I know we've discussed this in our workshop. I've talked with them at appraisal district. This is, you know, the law changed. Can you imagine that? It does not, this is one of those things, in most of the law changes, 99% of the laws, 99% of the laws that have changed have not been to Coppers Cove ISD's benefit. But this one kind of does, not that it's a big issue or anything, but, you know, they split up the way the appraisal district boards used to be, like, five people. And so, now there is an elected pool of people that serve on that board, and then, the ones that are appointed cycle through. All sounds good to the normal eye, until you start thinking about it. And people like Event and those taxing entities, they really, it really puts a bind for their representation. Because generally, what would happen is, is like, we would have two, the county would have two, and then, everybody else kind of got one or whatnot. And in this instance, there's going to be two people that are nominated, and then, next month will be voted on. And your votes are contingent upon how much taxing levy that you have. And so, in the past, everybody was voted on at one time, and those votes were distributed based on the governing bodies, and now, it's going to roll, and so, it kind of disenfranchises the little guys. So, it's kind of, yeah, it took some representation from them away. But nonetheless, you know, I did not hear anybody else say anybody new or anything, and so, you know, I would recommend going with the two previous people that we had there.
They just ended up with one year.
Yes, the 2025 is Inez Faison and...
What's his name? Let's see. Was it in there? Seems like it's Brian somebody.
William.
I think he's from Gatesville.
What did I do with it? Maybe it's here.
Here it is.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Kevin George. Kevin George and Inez Faison are the two that are up for renomination. Everybody else still has time left on there to serve.
So, we'll vote on them next.
Yeah, y'all are, you know, y'all are welcome to, I mean, that's just...
These are the nominations.
Those were the two that was nominated, and y'all are welcome to nominate more, because like I say, the vote takes place next month.
Alright, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move we nominate the two that have been recommended?
We have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mr. Traeger. I will start the vote. Down at the opposite end, Mr. Cora.
Yes.
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 Alright, that passes unanimously. And that is all, isn't it?
We're looking for some type of conclusion, huh?
We will adjourn our meeting at 6:48 PM, before 7 o'clock. Y'all leave, you know, wait and whoop it up when you get outside, okay?